October 21st, 2013. Glad to have everyone tonight. We have Pastor Shale Osmond of the Life Church Smyrna Center for God at 4100 King Springs Road. Looks like we've got a bunch of scouts coming in here, Shale. So if you want to just wait one second. Is this Troop 11 coming in? Why don't you, I'm gonna get them to lead us in the place of flags if they want to come all the way up front. I know that, I'm sorry, Shale, I mean, your God is more important than this. Pack Chief Blake Kenyon.
Yes, sir.
My goodness. He's gonna introduce the kids, but what we're gonna do first is we're gonna do the invocation and the pledge, so we may have exceeded our occupancy. This is a great meeting not to have anything controversial. Blake Kenyon, right?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you, and I'm gonna let Shale come up. Why don't you introduce the guys, because we're gonna ask them to lead us in the place of flags. If you want to, just to tell us who you are and what you're doing. We don't normally do this, but we're glad that y'all are here and see the kids, so yeah, y'all on TV up here.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's a microphone.
We have Troop 11 and Pack 11. We're located at Smyrna's First at United Methodist. We're here today to present honors to our country.
And we've also got some guests from Troop 88, is that correct? They're here just to observe? They're here to earn some kind of something towards something. They're in the back. Yep.
Set us a chip in the community.
Bingo. Thank y'all very much for being, this is great. I was a Boy Scout at one time, believe it or not. But at this time, I'm gonna ask my good friend, Shale Osmond, to come up and give the invocation and then let these, we'll let Scout Troop 11 and Pack 11 lead us in the place of the flags. So everyone, please stand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the opportunity to conduct business here in our city on your behalf. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct all the decisions that will be made so that our community would be bettered and the quality of life would continue to increase. Lead and guide everything that is discussed and decided, and we will thank you for it. In your great name we pray. Amen.
Three, say it. Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I sit down?
America's, my kids are gonna be placed in the newspaper next month.
Oh.
If you don't mind, a couple of them can come up and we can take a picture with.
Yep. Yes, sir. You're in charge, baby. Wherever you want me to, wherever you want me to go. Can these folks sit down?
I want you guys to go back.
He's not gonna tell y'all but once either.
Hurry up, quickly.
Funny, funny. How you doing? Hello. What's up?
And you guys come up.
Get on the side of you. What'd I do with his chair?
Okay, guys, look.
Get the slower guys up here where the ramp is.
Okay.
Y'all know the routine, guys.
Yeah, let me have a little. Come over here.
Maybe I should move his chair. Hold on. Let me move his chair out of the way. Got a chair remover? Let's see.
You guys come back so America slide the chair back.
Yeah. Let me just get out of the way. I hope I don't hurt my back here.
Get out of there.
Go back for a second. Go back. Let him get the chair out of the way. Let him get the chair out of the way.
All right, there we go. High glass. All right, now.
Okay.
Now, what's this, for me to stand on?
Yeah.
All right, now you guys come on in, James.
You can stand on that.
Come on, son.
Can y'all get in there?
Get two up on that stand. Get the second kid on there.
Come on, up here. Right now, can y'all sleep? This is, we need another stand. Hold on.
And our other leader, we have a leader back there.
Let's see, maybe, how about, maybe, let's do some, how about this right here? How about this guy coming up right here?
Okay.
That's okay with you?
There you go. Y'all crowd in.
Am I okay, boss?
You're good to go. Where's our other leader? Is that our other leader over there?
I think, uh, okay. All right, what are we doing?
We're gonna look and smile.
This ain't gonna be, this ain't no blanket party, is it? All right, y'all look straight ahead, one time.
Geez.
That's it. One more.
Camera two, over to the right.
Are we good, number two? Okay. Do you want to say something from up here? Or you're gonna wait to get down?
Yeah, we'll wait till we get down.
All right, y'all get out of here now. Come on. Thank y'all for coming.
Are we about to leave?
Hey, don't be too comfortable with this, man. I'll see you later.
Mr. Bacon, thank you.
Oh, good.
Thank you very much.
Where's, is this not, what's that guy's name that was in that movie? One of them, the Waylon Boys?
Major Payne.
Where they going? They're escaping. Y'all come on back up. I know they can hear you out here and I can hear you, but TV, where'd them kids go?
Can you bring them back? I need them. I need them.
Get back up here.
Did they get scared?
Yeah.
Fine.
They ain't scared of me.
Come on, work it.
Let's go. Up to it.
You can come this way this time. Come on.
This is all very worth the time that we're spending, because it's so great to see kids that are still in the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and the parents are here and this is, this is great and folks that give back to their community, so.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Jim Cook and I'm the Scout Master for Troop 11 and we'd like to take the opportunity to thank the city and the council and the department heads that, that work with the troop in particular on our, one of the 12 points of our scout law, which is to pay our tribute to the government as well as far as the, helping them with Eagle Scout projects all over the city, our Adopt a Mile that we do on South Cobb Drive, which just did last weekend, and, and handing out trash bags at Smyrna Concert Series. So we're glad that you're, keep yourselves available to help us whenever you can.
And we'll give honor to you.
You already have.
Hey la di la di. Hey la di la di hey. Hey la di la di. Hey la di la di hey. Come on, son.
Are they leaving? And Councilman Fennel has got something he wants to present to both Troop 11 and 88. We're gonna do that. Troop 88, Jim Simpson, is he back there? Jim, if you want to come in, come on up. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to chair the Public Safety Committee and as a component of public safety in our community, one of the things we most appreciate is those folks in our community who are involved and respect law the way the scouts do. And I've just started a practice last year that I wanted to continue, and that is when I find a flag that is worthy of retirement from active use, that we find an opportunity for the scouts to perform their duties in properly retiring the flag. And it's my pleasure to present this flag for proper retirement to the scout troop here in Smyrna. Thank you.
Jim Simpson has got, right behind you. He's Troop 88.
If any citizen has a flag they want to retire, find your local scout troop. Find your local scout, give them the honor of taking part in this wonderful ceremony to properly retire these flags from active use to allow the newer stars and stripes to fly, to proclaim our pride in our community and our nation. And I want to present this to Troop 88. Jim?
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all for all y'all do. Appreciate it very much. I think Pack Chief Blake Kenyon is, I think he just came straight from Parris Island. We do have a couple of agenda changes. Under 4A, public hearing, that issue will be tabled until, did you say 11/4, November the 4th, once we get to it?
Yes, sir.
Let me see if I see anything else that we are doing. I think that's the only change that, that we have on the agenda. Okay. We've already recognized Boy Scout of America Pack, Pack and Troop 11, we just got through doing that. Item 4 is land issues on his annexation. A is Z13-015, public hearing and reasonable request, reasonable for PVC Cobb Canyon to MU Conditional Smyrna, 81.95 acre track, land lots 58, 171, 172, 174, 175 and 284 of the 18th District of Cobb Canyon, Riverview Road and Nichols Drive, Jamestown LP. Is there anybody here, I think that was posted, I think, for, was it properly posted for annexation? Is there anybody here for that? Because it, it is on the agenda, but it will be tabled till the 4th of November. So I'll just go straight to Ron, Councilman Ron Fennel, and get him to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the background to be read, if I could, from the administrator real quick, just. Eric, you have any background you want to add?
Nothing further. Nothing further other than it was tabled at the request of our staff, as we still have a couple of issues to work out.
Okay. And just to, for the record, Mr. Sudwith, if you could come forward just a moment, I want to just reiterate, we've been in fairly detailed discussions with the applicant who understand the intricacies of the various pieces of this puzzle and the applicant is aware of the action we're gonna take tonight. Could you reiterate that and conversations you've had, please?
Yes. The applicant is aware, we've gotten it down to, to really the road issue related to the floodplain. And the issue is really working out the wording and the commitment as to what they are going to do. We are still rolling over the approvals that we got from Cobb County, but we are actually tightening up some wording relating to the floodplain issues and, and the various associated deals with that. And I, I believe we're close, just, just so that you know. This isn't a table, because we still have a lot of work to do. This is a table that we just have a little bit more work to do, and that's why it's only being tabled for two weeks till your next meeting.
Thank you. And thank you and the team for the hard work. Our city engineer's been engaged with conversations with the applicant's engineer and, and the staff, to-staff relationship and conversations between the county and the city, the DOT and this applicant have resulted in narrowing down to the last remaining couple of items to be addressed on paper so that we can get the application fully and completely ready for public consumption. But we're excited about this project, which will annex some 82 acres into the city on the south side. The city of Smyrna will, following this, now front in a large way on the Chattahoochee River. Smyrna has grown and it is reflected in this as well. But, Mr. Mayor, I move we table Z13-015 to November 4, 2013.
Their motion is second to table till November the 4th. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item 5 is previous licenses, we have none. Item 6 is formal business. A is V13-034, appeal the decision of license and variance board regarding variance request V13-034, allow temporary sign only on weekends, Saturday and Sunday. 10 acres landlot, 849, 2453 Cobb Parkway, D. Geller and Son is the applicant here? Apparent? Give us the background. It's scheduled to be heard tonight.
Mr. Mayor, our current sign ordinance, under our current sign ordinance, temporary signs are limited to periods of 30 days, 30 consecutive days, four times per calendar year. The applicant wishes to display a temporary sign only on weekends, it'll be Saturday and Sunday before 104 days. Staff has reviewed the request against the variance review standards and found that there to be no unique or extraordinary circumstances applying to the property. Also, staff believes that the strict application of the code does not deprive the property of its reasonable use and that the need for the variance itself is self-created due to the applicant wishing to display the sign only on weekends. This item went before the license and variance board on September 11th, 2013, and was denied. So it's coming to this body for an appeal of that denial and staff is recommending a pulling denial of that requested variance.
Is the applicant D. Geller and Son? Anyone here from D. Geller? Ms. Pritchett, it's your district, it's your pleasure.
Okay, the background on this is, we had several business owners who worked on our ordinance to decide how to handle signs, because it became quite a mess in Smyrna. So these people literally worked, business owners, worked for almost two years, if not two years, coming up with our guidelines. And as Eric said, our guidelines say that on this particular type of tube man that they want to use, you can have inflatables, but you have to have a 30-day period, the maximum is 30 days, four times a year. And they're asking for us to do something that's not even in our policy at all, because you can't just display on a weekend. Well, secondly, D. Geller has a large sign on the marquee for the host shopping center north of there and directly across from International House of Pancakes, they have another marquee sign, granted it's smaller. They have a truck park that has D. Geller on the side of it, and then they have their sign on the building. So it's not proven to me that this is really a business deal. I wouldn't do anything to harm a business in Smyrna, but this is something they want to do, because it's advertising. It's not a need. So I am going to vote to uphold staff's recommendation to deny this request.
I have a motion to deny by Ms. Pritchett. I need a second or...
No.
Second. Is there any other discussion?
Can I just chime in here for a second? I think part of the motion also is based on the fact that, that, that no one's here from D. Geller, so they haven't presented any evidence.
So you want us to reschedule it?
To support, no, just to support their, their contention. So, so part of the motion, I think, would be for kind of their want of presenting any evidence, want a prosecution of their case. They haven't presented any evidence to show the need for the variance.
Well, I thought I said that a few minutes ago.
That's what, but...
Yeah, I'm just saying that, just for the record, that part of the, of the rationale for the motion is that no one is here from D. Geller to present the, the case, so we haven't heard any evidence showing the need for us to deviate from the ordinance.
That's what I'm about to say.
Does that make sense?
Listen, I'd like to say something. One of the things that they did present in their appeal, in their appeal letter dated September 24th, 2013, is that they spend $1.4 million in advertising. This apparently works, because they seem like they're doing well, and they say in their letter, they bring in customers from all over the greater Atlanta area, from the most northern parts of Georgia and from within the Smyrna community. And so the way I see this is, because again, this committee and our staff and council, it was a multi-year collaboration to reach our current sign ordinance. And they were pretty, I think, made concessions for temporary things and, and it's, I have a lot of respect for that sign ordinance. And so I feel like if they are, if they already have an advertising budget of $1.4 million, if they're bringing in customers from all across North Georgia and the metro area, I do not think the lack of a tube man is going to break their business. And I, I just, there's nothing that really compels me to, to consider to allow them to have this tube man every weekend. And that, that is my stance on the issue.
Mr. Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was whether or not D. Geller and Son was aware of tonight's public hearing on the subject.
Yes, Mr. Fennel, they asked for it to be postponed till tonight.
Till tonight specifically? Okay. Because, you know, I, I share your, your confidence that after a two-year work product, we came to an agreement on a sign ordinance that was fair and it was fairly complete. Business community leaders involved in, at all size levels, coming to the conclusion that this was the most in keeping of how Smyrna's future sign ordinance ought to look. But I do want to make sure that the applicant, who is not represented here tonight, understands that we held this, tabled this to tonight specifically at their request, and I want that to be a part of the record.
But just to make everybody clear, they can, they can put this sign up for 30 days.
Four, four, four times in a row.
Right. So you might see whatever they're gonna have out there, all they were asking for was just to change it to where they had it just on Saturday and Sunday. So I mean, I don't want people to think, well, they turned it down and they're, you know.
Yeah. Well, the point is, it's not about the 104 days or the 120 days. It's what Terry and I both were talking about, in that we had business owners who worked on this ordinance for almost, I'll say, over a year. And they looked at every aspect of it and it was changed, I don't know how many times, with amongst the business owners. So I, I cannot support somebody going directly against that ordinance, because they want to do something different. And so that's why I, I think it should be denied. And I'll be more than happy, Ken, if they call you tomorrow to meet with them. They haven't called me at all, so I'd be more than happy to meet with them.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just one thing. Ken, is it correct in saying that they could have one of the twirling sign people? Because then it would be a First Amendment issue?
Hey, I can't hear you.
So, I mean, it's not, you know, you see the twirling sign people everywhere, doing dancing, leaping, jumping.
And we call them human signs, and it does get into freedom of expression issues. So they are allowed, yes, they could do that.
But there are several things they can do.
Absolutely.
Besides this.
Well, I just wanted to bring up that they could hire a twirling sign person, whatever that's called.
That's a good point. So that's a good point. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You have a motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 6 to 1 to deny. Mr., let's see who. Let's see, who voted in the nay? I can't, is anything coming up? Wade Lenika votes in the, in the negative. Okay. That's, that's approved, 6, 1 to deny. Let's see, public hearing is item B under formal business, public hearing, appeal, license and variance board denial of October 9th, 2013, for variance request V13-041, allow reduction of impervious stream buffer from 25 feet to 21 feet, 0.42 acres, landlot 456, 3303 Woodcrest Court, Bradley Hall. And I'm gonna go ahead and read item C also, which is the lot next to it, I believe. Appeal decision of the variance board denial of October 9th for variance request V13-042, allow elimination of impervious stream buffer, 0.51 acre landlot 456, 3305 Crest, I'm sorry, Woodcrest Court, Bradley Hall. Mr. Taylor, will you give us the background on both of those? And then we will, let me ask this, is Bradley Hall here? Okay. All right, not yet, just want to give us the background.
Mr. Mayor, section 46-160A, 1 and 2 of the smart code, requires the establishment of a 50-foot minimum stream bank buffer and a 25-foot impervious buffer. This buffer is measured horizontally from the point where vegetation has been rusted by normal stream flow. The subject property at 3303 Woodcrest Court and 3305 Woodcrest Court is an undeveloped lot. The applicant proposes to build a single-family home on the subject property and a variance is being requested because the proposed location is within the impervious surface setback. Item V13-041, that for the location 3303 Woodcrest Court, the applicant is looking to reduce the stream buffer, the impervious stream buffer, from 25 feet to 21 feet. And at the 3305 location, he's looking to eliminate that requirement altogether. Staff has reviewed this and is recommending approval with conditions.
All right, the applicant is here, is anyone here, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or they would like to make any public comment concerning either item C or B or C on this, on our agenda? Anyone who would like to make a comment? And also, Mr. Hall, you too, and you need to step forward and be sworn in. Even if you just think you want to make a comment, you need to get sworn in. You don't have to make a comment, but I don't want to swear people in all night long. So those that think they want to make a comment or want to make a comment, please step forward. Walk this way. Just, and if you think you want to make a comment, I think we've got everybody, though. You don't have to make a comment. Y'all about to tell the truth or we'll have that Cub Scout, Pack Leader back in here to talk to y'all? All right, this is in Mr. Corky Welch's ward. If anybody wants to, just have a seat. This is in Ward 1234, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sudwith, would you come up and give a little bit of a background on this and then tell us exactly what we're looking at? Rusty, I'm sorry.
No.
Rusty was darting to the microphone here.
Rusty does his magic. I just push the buttons.
The other night, you were just sort of passing the buck, and you kept saying it's Eric Randall, it's Eric Randall.
I did a good job on that, didn't I?
Okay.
Eric is here tonight.
Thank goodness. Go ahead, Ken.
I mean, this is a request regarding two lots that are vacant. They both have stream buffers as well as the impervious buffer on them. They're classified as, as V13041 and V13042. Mr. Taylor's already given sort of the history that it's gone from staff into license and variance. License and variance denied the request because there was opposition, and hence it automatically comes up here. Here are the vicinity map of the, of the two lots for 3303 and 3305. As you can see, they are next to each other. One of the big issues is that the stream buffer, when the property was platted in 1996, was different than what it is today. The requirements have substantially changed. Whoops, let me go back to that. The red that you see on the left side of the screen is the 25-foot buffer. The requirements have changed so that, that in addition to the state buffer of 25 feet, the city has a 25-foot buffer and then another 25-foot impervious buffer, which is outlined in the yellow on the slide in the right. It is that 25-foot impervious buffer that we are talking about tonight. These are the proposed site plans. You can see there's two, two homes being proposed, 3303 and 3305. This is the 25-foot impervious surface setback that I was referring to. As you can see on the one lot, it, it basically clips a small corner of the deck coming off of the house, so that's why there is one request for a 40. of the house, so that's why there is one request for a 4-foot reduction. The other one, given the new, or the relatively new, impervious buffer requirement, there's, it would go right through the proposed metal of the house. That's shown in the yellow, with the yellow line there. That shows what we would classify as the area encroachment. Eric can probably do a much better job of explaining these areas that are being preserved, but basically, it is a one-to-one trade-off, that if you're encroaching in one area, you're staying out of another area so that it evens out.
If, if we were back in 1996, would there be a variance required?
No, because the only variance that's being requested here is on the impervious. This doesn't affect that original 25-foot buffer that the state requires off of the stream, right next to the stream.
Okay. One other question. You and I had a brief, a brief discussion about the stairway on Lot 35, and it appears to encroach upon the 5-foot setback. Can you explain that to me and members of the audience as well?
The way stairs have been handled for years within the city of Smyrna, they are allowed as an encroachment on that, similar to a chimney or an overhang of a roof. A stairway is classified as that, so that's not technically an encroachment that needs a variance from that. It's just part of the stairwell and is permitted.
This was originally rezoned in 96, is that correct?
Yes.
Until, I think, Saturday, I was with the understanding that Trayton Homes had developed all that, but as it turns out, the Reed family were actually the developers, and then I think Trayton Home was just bought the, they bought the lots, and they chose not to, not to build on these two lots, which I found was sort of remarkable, that Trayton didn't finish, you know, and I don't know if there's any other lots in that subdivision. You'd think if they could build on, you know, a Stone Mountain, that they would build it 'cause, you know, you always have these out parcels, or unbuildable lots, trash lots, as they used to call them. Do you know, Ken or Eric, if there's any other lots in that Reed Place subdivision that are, have not been developed? Okay.
Hey, Mayor, I'm not, I'm not aware of any out there at this point.
Were you aware that these were out there?
Be honest with you, no. I wasn't aware that these were out there either.
Okay. Any questions of Ken or Eric?
None of Eric. I would like to ask some questions of the owner.
Okay, yeah, well, does anybody have a question of Ken? Okay, or Eric, okay. Mr., is it Bradley Scott or Scott Bradley?
Bradley Hall.
Bradley Hall, that's close. If you can get the podium away from Mr. Sudwith, you can... Just for the record, if you'll tell us who you are.
Bradley Hall.
Mr. Hall, based on what I'm seeing here, I'm assuming these are, these are homes that you are building either as, as custom homes or as spec homes. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I currently live in Smyrna, and one of them's gonna be my personal property, and the other one's gonna be for a speculation home.
Okay. Have you made contact with the HOA out there and the Architectural Review Committee and so forth?
Yes.
So it's your plan to go through those committees with, with both of these homes and so forth, then?
Correct, yeah. We're, we're in that process right now.
Based on the plan that I see, there are no further extensions that you plan beyond what we're seeing right here, as far as decks or any other building that you see going beyond the footprint that's shown on these plans, then?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other questions.
Any questions? I don't know who, where I got this Scott guy from. It must have been an imaginary friend of mine somewhere, but anybody have any questions of Mr. Hall? If there's none, then I'll ask anybody that was sworn in that would like to make any comment, please come forward, tell us who you are and where you live at, and any comment that you'd like to make.
I'm Elizabeth Lee. I'm the president of the Reed Place HOA. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors. They wanted me to make a statement on the record. And so quickly to the mayor's question about whether there are other open lots in the subdivision, I don't think there are. I think these are the last two. Under our covenants, property owners must secure approval from the HOA before they begin modifications to the exterior of their lot. So that includes these new construction projects that Mr. Hall's proposing. As to Lot 36, which is 3305 Woodcrest Court, we haven't received his full plans for that. I understand that the city's received some plans, but we haven't seen them yet, so I can't comment much on that. As to the other lot, 3303, we have received his proposal for that. We were not able to approve his original plans, but like he said, you know, we're talking with him. At this point, we're looking forward to receiving his revised plans and to working through those with him. We do have some concerns from his plans as they were originally submitted to us. These include the size and the width of the house, the distance between the houses, the placement of the driveway, and some issues with the retaining walls. Adjustments to those elements would alter the site plan compared to what you're looking at right now. But like I said, we're working with Mr. Hall, and we look forward to reviewing his revised plans.
I had a question, but I sort of just went somewhere.
I wanted to ask you a question. Did the original developer, did they go bankrupt or something? And this is the secondary builder that's come in?
No. Our homes were built in 1998, 1999 by Trayton, and for some reason, you know, Trayton didn't build on those lots. As I understand, the property reverted back to the Reeds, and they just kind of owned the property for years. And then I guess, you know, recently, they were looking to dispose of the property.
And I think that's pretty, that's pretty right. I mean, you're accurate that they, they finally, I think they just auctioned off a lot of their property.
The Reeds, yeah.
They had a bunch of lots throughout the city, on Canterbury and a couple, Valley, whatever the Valley Street is. But they auctioned off a lot of lots, had some on King Springs and...
Right.
I think they just got rid of it, you know, so... But like I said, Bill Poston told me that Trayton decided that they did not want to build on these two lots for whatever reason. So, okay. Any questions?
I do, yeah. You, and I appreciate you coming here tonight, and I appreciate your candor. You said you're looking forward to working with them. Is that something that you're saying with optimism, or something that you're saying with a little bit of trepidation?
We're, we're working together.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just curious, are those covenants for 20 years or 50 years?
They don't expire.
Okay.
Uh-uh.
Okay, all right.
I don't, I don't think so. I know that we did some, well, I don't, I don't think that they expire it.
Okay.
You think? They were, they're recorded on the original plats, and then we did an amendment in 2010. Right.
Well, even at 20 years, they wouldn't be expired yet, would they?
Not quite yet.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Hall, Ms. Hall. Just one question. If houses aren't built on these lots, what do you think will happen to those lots?
Well, right now, they're wooded. There's trees covering almost all of it. I can't, I can't speculate about what might happen because, you know, right now, Mr. Hall owns them, so I'm not sure what he would do with them if he wasn't building houses on them. I'm not sure if he'd, you know, want to continue to own them, or, I don't, I don't know. I can't speculate on that.
But Mr. Hall, then, as, as the owner of the lots, who would, I guess, technically be a member of the HOA?
Yeah, it's a mandatory HOA.
So he'd be paying dues and all the rest of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How many homes are in your HOA right now?
I believe that we have 60, 66 or 62 homes.
Okay. So there is, the, the board itself is not stated opposition to new homes being added to the community. It's just you're adhering to some of the covenants, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that was sworn in and would like to make any comment? Don't be bashful. Come on, just tell us who you are and where you live at, and any comment that you'd like to make.
My name is William Pamplin. I reside next to the two properties that Mr. Hall is proposing to build on, and I'm just here to speak in support of what Ms. Lee just said.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Welch.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I would like to recommend approval of the variance for V-13-Z41, allowance of reduction of the impervious stream buffer from 25 to 21 feet, 0.42 acres, landlots 456 dash 3303 Woodcrest Court. But I'd like to remind Mr. Hall that he is subject to all the HOA requirements and the review of the Architectural Committee within that, within that subdivision.
So whatever it's worth, I'm glad that you're gonna be one of the, one of the property owners. You'll be, you'll be amongst all these folks. Okay. That's, is that, and that's a motion?
Yes.
It's a motion. And a second.
Mr. Welch, just a quick clarification. Does your motion include the stipulation that Community Development has put about the offset being preserved and protected in the stream buffer, outside the stream buffer, the trade-off of...
I, yeah, that's a good question. Yes, I will make that a part of my motion.
Okay.
I think it's in the application, but that's a good question.
All right, anybody else? Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on this one to approve the variance request. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved, seven, zero. Mr. Welch, the second one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to make a motion to approve the variance board request for V-13-Z42, allowance of the elimination of the impervious stream buffer, 0.51 acres, landlot 456 at 3305 Woodcrest, from Mr. Bradley Hall, subject to the Community Development requirements, and again, reminding the owner of the, subject to the requirements of the HOA and the approval of the Architectural Review Committee, and I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve this variance request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, six, one, with Ms. Wilkinson voting no. So both those were approved. I hope things work out good for everybody. I think he'll be a good neighbor, I don't know him. I thought he was Scott when he came up here, so... But y'all do have a great neighborhood. I go through there a lot, so y'all are a big part of Smyrna, and we glad to have y'all there, so, thank y'all. Item D, under the public hearing agenda, is to replace Palm Broker, excuse me, Palm Brokers ordinance with ordinance 2013-15, Article 3, Chapter 22, Division 1, Section 22 through 66 through 22100, Palm Broker City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, the city undertook an overhaul of our Palm Broker ordinance back in March of 2011. Shortly after that, concerns were raised about the section of the ordinance that related to electronic records collection and submitted to our, to our police department. And so therefore, that particular section of the ordinance was suspended numerous times over the last two years. Back in July of this year, Cobb County actually adopted an ordinance that requires electronic submission of Palm Broker data. And with that, the city took the opportunity to compare our ordinance and modify it so that it more closely mirrors that of the county to include the collection of electronic data and submission to the police department. And so now that we have had the ability to compare ordinances, and now that the county is on board, staff is recommending approval of this Palm Broker ordinance, replacing Sections 22, Division 1, Sections 2266 through 22-100.
There's also another ordinance that we're replacing, and that's precious metal. Yeah, go ahead and just do that, and then I'm gonna ask, I think I see Chris Singleton back there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, like the, like the previous item, these two items go hand in hand, although we did not take the opportunity back in March of 2011 to overhaul our precious metals ordinance. However, in discussions with our police department and, and other entities, we realized that the issues are, are very similar when it comes to precious metals dealers. And so staff compared our ordinance against that, it was adopted by the county, and modified it so that more closely mirrors that of the county. And among other things, we now have the requirement that precious metals dealers have to submit their records to the police department via electronic means, via software that's selected by the chief of police. And so we do recommend approval of that one as well.
I'm gonna ask Chris Singleton to head on up here. This is a public hearing. There's actually three items that we're addressing now. There's replacement of the Palm Brokers ordinance, those sections, replace the precious metal dealer ordinance with new language, and there's also lift the suspension of all sections, mandate and use of electronic records. That one's been going on for a pretty good while, so if it's okay with Mr. Fennel.
Absolutely, please, let's hear it.
Let me just ask this, is there anybody here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning any of these three issues? If you, if there is anyone here that'd like to make any comment, would love to give the opportunity to speak if you wanted to. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Fennel, and I'm sure he's gonna ask Chris Singleton.
It is. What this is... This is two years in the making or more, over a long period of time, and police work is difficult enough as it is, and we're trying to curtail fencing, among other things, and we're trying to make the community safe. And Chris, if you'll give folks a little background on it and what you're finding and what we determine at the end of the day is the best policy on a go-forward basis.
What we use now is just antiquated. It's old. It's software that we can get all the pawn brokers or all the pawn shops to enter their, their people in the property that's pawning at this time, they can enter it into the system. It's not very user-friendly when it comes to me trying to find an item that may be stolen, me looking up a known suspect, me looking up a known suspect or somebody that I suspect is stealing something. I can't really go in and search well in the database that we have now. When I go for just a serial number, if you lose your TV and you give me a serial number, I have no way to check that now. I can check it through the state system, however, it has to be the exact serial number that was put in by the pawn shop and it was pawned. If they put an 8 instead of a B, whether it be on accident or purpose, I will never find it. The system that we're going to now is just new. It's updated. It's a searchable database where I can put in half of a serial number, or when I put in a serial number, it will give me back other serial numbers that closely relate to it. I can put in a last name of, of somebody, and it will pull up everything that they pawned in the... in the past. Uh, some other benefits of the new system that we have is it searches nationwide. If somebody steals something in Smyrna but lives in another state, if it gets pawned with the pawn shop that uses one of the softwares that we're thinking about going to, it will alert me that it's, that it's pawned. At this point, I cannot go outside of the state of Georgia. There's absolutely no way unless I call the detective and they have a same type of system that we have in that state. Um, it won't let pawn shops put, it makes pawn shops put all the information needed, date of birth, phone numbers, addresses, correct names, spellings. They have to be somewhat right, or the pawn shop ticket gets rejected, and they can't complete the transaction to give them money. It makes sure that they get all this information, so if I have to look up a person, I know their date of birth, I know their phone number, I know their current address, that they at least gave the pawn shop. It's real-time tracking. Right now, it takes me a day or two sometime to find a stolen item. As soon as they hit the button to go in, the, once they enter all the information into the system and they hit send, I can find it automatically. I can also put in known suspects into this software that we know still in the city of Smyrna, and it will not only know right away, but it can alert me or any other detective in Cobb County that this person has just pawned an item at such-and-such pawn shop. It gives us a much better chance of catching some of these people that are out there stealing and pawning stuff. Um, it lets me find the top ponders. If I have somebody that's pawning on a daily basis four or five items, and they're the same item, lawn mowers, if they don't own a lawnmower business, they shouldn't be having that much pawn, uh, lawnmowers to pawn. It just is a new system. It's a better system, and it allows us to do our job better at the police department.
Chris, there was a question I, I know before about where this information, uh, went to, and, um, it was a concern, I think, just about people's rights, and this, I was told the other day that if I pawned something that I would not only would I have a picture taken, or social security number, address, they need to go to some, at, at this time, we were looking at it before, it went to some company in Canada. I understand that that's changed. Where does the information go, and, uh, are some of the pawn shops already own the system, or?
Yes, in Smyrna and as well in Cobb County. Cobb County did, the city was looking at two main companies to do this for us, BWI, Business Watch International, they were out of Canada. They did have a server in Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department in Florida that all the information was going to. The other company is Leeds Online, and they're out of Dallas, Texas, and they hold all of their servers and all of the information in Dallas, Texas.
So that's who we'll be using as leads?
Leeds Online, I believe, is the one we're gonna select, yes, sir.
Have you heard any, I know before, there was, um, well, Smyrna Pawn was very concerned about, about what we were doing, and they're very, they're, they're very passionate about their business too, so, um, and I, and I, and one of the reasons why, why we have held off on a lot of this was because we wanted to make sure we weren't the only one sticking out there like a sore thumb that was doing something, and, um, so we were waiting till Cobb County to see what they were doing, because they were in the process of adopting the thing. Now, they have adopted it.
Correct.
Does Marietta, do the other cities, do they have it? That you know of?
I know that Kennesaw does. Kennesaw uses Leeds Online. Acworth is looking at using one or the other. Uh, the last I talked to Marietta, they weren't gonna use either one. I don't know if that's changed. That was a, probably about a year ago that I talked to them. They're using the system that they have, uh, manually entering, as far as I understand. They, there wasn't talks to go into either one.
So what's the difference in today that if I were going to pawn something versus if this passes, then tomorrow? What changes as far as, for me, the consumer, if I'm gonna pawn something, what, what do I have to go through?
You have to give them your ID, verify your phone number, your address. They put everything in the system, just like they would today, tomorrow. Uh, there is a stipulation in this that they would have to take a quick photograph of the person and give their fingerprint digitally, which puts it in the computer, where again, we have access to the fingerprint right away at my desk or any of the other detective's desk, as opposed to having to go and hope that they took it on a piece of paper in the pawn shop, and we may have a decent, uh, print of these people, uh, at the pawn shop.
But so, I come in, let's say that I'm wanted, and I've done this before, and I put my finger down, and should that, I mean, well then, would the pawn shops know, hey, this guy's a, you shouldn't take the pawn, or this guy's been arrested before? What happens?
I don't think that's gonna stop the pawn shop from taking the, taking the item.
But they still have to do that, go through?
Every time, they're supposed to take a new photograph and a new fingerprint at each pawn.
Okay. Is that download? It doesn't, they don't take a?
They take a photograph either from a digital camera, webcam, however, they decide to do that. That's compatible with the system, and it uploads it into the pawn itself. So it has Chris Singleton pawned a lawnmower on this date. Here's my picture, and here's my fingerprint that goes with that pawn on each pawn.
Chris, Cobb County's doing this and using this particular provider currently?
Uh, they're going to it right now. Yes, they just adopted it, and they are going with Leeds Online.
But it hasn't been implemented just yet?
They're in the process, yes. They've, from what I understood today, they're in their last stores, trying to get it up and running, uh, in their last handful of stores that they had to put it in.
Because I think we were patient and not trying to get ahead of Cobb County. We wanted to make sure that we, uh, we're working in concert ultimately at the end of the day with, with Cobb County on.
The way I understand it, at the end of this week, it will be in every pawn shop in Cobb County, as I was told today.
And the cost for each store owner for the equipment that would be needed for this is relatively inconsequential?
The way I understand it, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred dollars per store, if they don't already have a camera that can take a picture and a fingerprint scanner.
And the cost to the person pawning an item to engage this system?
Twenty cents per fifteen, twenty cents per ticket, and they can do fifteen item, fifteen items per ticket.
So for fifteen items on one ticket, it costs you twenty cents, and you just stand there and, and let them take your picture and put your finger down and fill out the form?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is fairly common around the country, and fairly customary to go down this procedure?
One of the two companies is, is, a lot of the countries go into, whether it be Leeds Online or BWI. Yes, sir.
But they, they do this procedure in communities across the country?
Yes, sir.
Is there an argument to be made that if you are one of the few communities in the county or the metro area perhaps that doesn't participate in one of these systems, that you, there's a potential that your pawn shops will be known as the place that didn't have as much security?
I would think that'd be fair to say, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is this gonna mess up my business of pawning copper? Had I, if I had a business like that?
Currently, we don't have a business that I know of that takes improv, the precious metals is jewelry and all.
I don't know where you take, take them to. I'm just.
Are you talking about copper pipes?
Yeah, yeah.
That goes to, we're supposed to go to recycling center, and we don't have any of those in the city at this time.
Oh, okay.
If we do, if we, if one started up and y'all approved it, then this system will work for their business as well.
But will you eventually, uh, I mean, will, will the, if you take it to a recycle center or something like that, do you eventually go, are you eventually going to tag it or whatever? I mean, because are they not stealing copper?
Unless the city or the county already has Leeds Online, uh, the business has to say, I'll do it just for, I want to show I'm a upstanding business and wanna go ahead and upload it to, to Leeds Online, which a lot of businesses, uh, Walgreens, CVS already do it for their drugs that you have to sign for, uh, Best Buy, some Radio Shacks, they all, already are uploading to Leeds Online without us requiring it. It's just a policy their business does, so they go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Chris? Ms. Alenica?
Yeah, and I'm not sure this is really a question for Detective Singleton or just a question in general, but we didn't receive, or at least I wasn't able to get until tonight, a redlined version of the ordinance, uh, in either case, precious metals or pawn shops. So I could clearly see kind of what changed and what stayed the same, but, so I may not catch everything. But under Section twenty-two seventy-three, permanent records required, content, sub-paragraph three, it talks about, uh, says specifically the name, age, telephone number, race, sex, date of birth, and address of the customer, a description of the general appearance of the customer, and the distinctive number of the customer's driver's license. And then if we go to Section twenty-two seventy-six, daily report to police, fingerprints to be secured, identification and penalty, it says, uh, the report shall show the name and address of the licensee, the time of transaction, the serial numbers of the pawn tickets, the amount paid or advanced, the full description of the article, blah, 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 and a description of the person pledging, selling, or pawning, including name, address, color, weight, and height. Daily reports shall also include copies of titles, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, what I'm seeing is those two paragraphs are not consistent. The, it seems like if we're requiring certain data in one place, it should be consistent in the other place. A, a general description of a subject is very different from height and weight. I mean, are they gonna have to put in a scale and measure these people to get that information? Um, you know, you've already got the driver's license. I, I'd think maybe we need to take a look at some of the details and, uh, table this and come back and make sure it's correct. I mean, even the agenda tonight changed. Originally, it talked about repealing the whole ordinance. Now we're just repealing and amending Division One, as I understand it. Um, I had a lot of questions before with the ordinance, what I thought was the entire ordinance being repealed, that I really haven't had a chance to, to study, because kind of the late-breaking news of, of what really is or isn't changing. So it's really not a question for Detective Singleton, but, but just a comment.
This was submitted by what department? All right, any other questions of Officer Singleton?
No, no questions. I, I would also like us to, well, I mean, one of the reasons we spent two years working on this is because we met with the community here in Smyrna, the business owners, and talked about some proposed changes, heard some feedback, and that affected what we did. And I thought that was a great example of government and business community working together, trying to solve problems so that everybody can be successful together. Uh, I, I think if we've got a final draft now, ready or almost ready, that we ought to have another meeting, go back to and make sure they've seen it and hear any feedback they have before we vote on it. I'm not comfortable voting to, to adopt it without knowing, you know, one, that all the details are consistent and appropriate, and two, that we're not gonna penalize the business community in ways that we haven't thought about, because we haven't asked them.
Um, what we told the people were, was that when we changed this and got all the, worked out, we were gonna implement it. So we've already gotten comments from the pawn brokers and the precious metal people. So there's no need to go back and have a second meeting with them, in my opinion.
I think that the, uh, whenever we met with the pawn shop folks initially, um, I think what we did was we, we took out or suspended the mandating of the, um, the electronic record, records. Um, I know that I sent, uh, one of the pawn shops, I think a copy of the, of what we were considering tonight. I've not heard back from them. And, but that was, had to do with the electronic records of, you know, recording those things. Um, I mean, if the, if the.
I don't disagree. Some of these are, are good changes. I'm just not sure, in my opinion, that, that we're ready. So I'm gonna go ahead and put a motion on the table to table this for two weeks, or until we can have a meeting with the local pawn shop businesses and, and get some feedback on it.
You, uh, before I get a second, you're talking about, uh, tabling the, it, no, D. Just D? Well, yeah, you can't make a motion table all three of them if you don't.
No, I'm just doing the one, because that's where we are. I would do the same for the others if given the opportunity.
I don't know what else. I, I mean, before we, before we get a second, can we, because then once this, we get a second, then it's gonna, we vote to table or not. I would like to hear from Chief Lee, uh, to see if he can get this card out of the ditch. Um, here's the man with all the eagles on his.
Stars.
Let me just bring up one thing real quick. When you were asking about, uh, recycling centers, this ordinance, uh, could not be put into effect on recycling centers. Okay.
We didn't until you brought it up, but it's.
Yeah, no, that if, if we were to have a recycling center open up, we, uh, by state law, we couldn't impose this on them. Okay.
Well, keep in mind, we've got a new police chief, you know, Chief Hook, and I guess Ken Sudrith, did you, uh, meet with Jay Wallace on any of this too? I, I know that, because when we did meet with the pawn shop people, we did go back and we did meet with them, and, uh, David asked you to come up, and then I asked Ken a question. That's pretty good, isn't it? Ken?
I did meet with Jay early in the process, uh, over a year ago. I have not met with him recently with the new stuff since the county has adopted, uh, their aspects of it. Once the, uh, new chief came on board, it was sort of handed to him.
Well, and, and to be honest, you know, we, we implemented whatever changes that we made, except for this electronic recording. Um, and we said we were gonna wait, so it's taken, I mean, initially, this whole ordinance was passed, and then maybe about a week or two after we adopted it, I think there was an issue raised somewhere about the BWI being a, you know, somebody.
A Canadian, but, yes.
Another country that was, that's when we're gonna send the information.
But I think the redlining that we have in here are changes even since then.
Was this something David that y'all asked for? I mean, Chief, that y'all asked?
Yeah, yes. This is, you know, like I said, um, the, these final changes redlined, um, items were, you know, after we were able to get Cobb County's, uh, or, ordinance that they passed so that we could make it more in line with what, uh, with what they were doing, because we wanted to be a little bit more uniform with that. And that's why initially, uh, our detectives was wanting the, uh, not Leeds Online, but the other company. I always wanna say BWI.
Yeah, BWI, absolutely.
Yes. But, uh, you know, we, we didn't wanna go with, uh, you know, with one company if the county was gonna go to another. That was kind of crazy. And, uh, because, uh, you know, the Leeds, of course Leeds Online turned out to be a US company instead of a Canadian one, uh, which really, in my opinion, works out better anyway. I, I do agree. I, I would've had issues with us sending information out of the country.
And, and, and let me say this. I don't know that, from a, um, how some folks in the pawn business feel about, because they are very passionate about your rights and what you can have and what you can't have, and, uh, good folks, but they're very passionate. But the deal is, is that they, I don't know that it would change their minds about how they really feel about, I, I think it'd make them feel better that we're not sending the stuff out of the country.
Can I? I'd like to comment on that, because that was an issue of major concern a couple of years ago, and when we had a discussion initially with the pawn brokers about this. But one thing that came to mind, because I asked them, well, how, you know, because they were concerned about sending it outside of the country, about the security, when you do, when you are sending information across borders, um, which personally, I, I questioned the veracity of that simply because information is sent across borders regularly with, with transac, with transactions that happen. But, but I asked them how they were keeping their information, how they were securely transmitting information to the police department at that time, and they said, well, they were putting it in an Excel spreadsheet and then emailing it to the police department. And I said, well, I asked them, is the Excel spreadsheet encrypted, or are the emails encrypted? And they weren't. So I just wanted to make the point that I, I don't, you know, if security were the paramount concern with transmitting data electronically, I don't necessarily think, in my opinion, that by sending an unencrypted spreadsheet and an unencrypted email, that that necessarily is the most secure way of transmitting information either.
Oh, I, I would agree, yes.
Any other questions of?
Chief, regarding the question of the identification, um, markers that are requested here, do you have any, any problems with what, what is requested?
No, I, and, and I apologize, Ms. Alenica. I wasn't sure exactly which ones, when you were reading them off, where there was, uh, did you say there was a duplication on it?
Well, uh, no, it was, for me, it was just inconsistent. I don't mean to interrupt Mr. Welch, but.
No, I'm, I'm finished.
And again, I didn't see this till about six-thirty tonight. Uh, I mean, I was up here yesterday trying to access these documents, and a redlined version was not available. But Section twenty- But Section 2273, Subparagraph 3 does not match Section 2276, Subparagraph A, just in terms of the identification requirements of someone engaging in a covered transaction. You know, one asked, you know, just, just one short example, one asked for a general description, one asked for height and weight. Again, how are you going to get that unless you put a scale in? Because, I mean, if you're going to hold them accountable for that-
They don't weigh you there.
So, so if we've got a copy of the driver's license, make that the requirement and, and use that. But that's not what the language says. Yes, sir. It's buried in that paragraph, about halfway down.
Okay, why, okay, whereas 2273, code subsection 3 is asking for more information than what 2276A is?
Correct.
Is it one a daily report and one's an ongoing permanent file log?
One's a permanent record and one's a daily report.
And I'm just suggesting, make it easy for the business. Let them take the information one time, one place, and that suffices for all the requirements. Instead of multiple forms, multiple entries, multiple files, keep it simple.
I guess I'm just asking because I've got a microphone here. What is the advantage of having 73 being, that's the, the daily thing is 76, right?
Wait, I will call on Chris Singleton with-
Get him back up there.
I don't know if this will make it any clearer, Mr. Lenica, but the form that you open up to put Leeds Online or BWI, it's basically a tab form, last name, tab, first name, tab, height, tab, weight, tab, date of birth, and it just goes down the list of all of that. And I believe by doing that, that would fulfill both of these with the general description being the height and weight and that kind of stuff as they're putting the information into the system. And then at some point, and I don't know how computers work and do this, but it also puts it into their system as well. Once you put it into Leeds Online, it all goes into their system as well. The way I understand it, they only put it in once, just like they do now, it's just a tab fill-in, and that makes sure they get all the points of interest in the report so that we can get what we need.
And that may be 100%-
You're on.
100% correct. I'm just not sure, because I can't see that form and validate the form to the ordinance and these data points with the data required by the ordinance to know that they match.
Is there any reason why the, the pawn shop folks would not, would, I mean, I'm looking at it from, we're not doing that, but the pawn shop people are. I don't know if it's going to be a problem with them or not.
They do that basically now. When I get a report the way I get it now, it still, it tells me all the same information, name, date of birth, height, weight, driver's license number. They ask them for their social security number. If not, they can put in the driver's license number in that spot as well, so they get in that information right now as it, as it sits the way we get it now.
Chris, I didn't see the effective date. If we pass this tonight and the mayor signs it, it's, goes into effect tomorrow?
I assume the ordinance does. I don't think we can implement this-
Well, we've had it under suspension, so technically, we're lifting a suspension is what it amounts to, so it'd go into effect. My only question is, I mean, is there adequate time for people to maintain compliance, given the fact that we're, you know, we're going to take an action and then put it out on the street?
I think the police department would need some time to implement. I think we would want to know how to use the system thoroughly before we ask the businesses to do such. And then what we were going to do before, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What we were going to do before is, is basically go around, implement, implement this, and then give some type of, it was 30 or 60 days, I can't remember, a chance to actually get the system up and working before any citations were issued. I could go out to the stores and say, the prints are not exactly how we need them to be, and work out all the bugs before we actually officially implement to, to start writing citations and that kind of stuff.
So, if we approve the ordinance tonight, Scott, could we put a date on there as when it becomes effective?
Yeah, you could, you could easily do that. If you pass the ordinance, you could say to become effective on and list a date. Do that.
I'd suggest, given where we are in our time cycle, that, you know, we give you, number one, the police department, an opportunity to make sure that you have all of your team adequately trained and prepared for the implementation phase, have the questions answered, the bugs worked out, know what you're looking for when you go in to review these, because with these computer programs, sometimes they do it a certain way, and it may not be naturally the way you would think about it, doing it, and you want to generate and populate reports appropriately. How much time, you say 60 days, you think it'd take to get your team totally up to speed, comfortable that you are helping to-
I feel comfortable with that.
Make, make everybody aware, 60 days?
So, what if we make it effective January 1, 2014?
That'd be all right?
I think that's more than enough time.
Do you think that y'all will meet resistance from the pawn shop people if we implement this, just one of them?
Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Are you already up to speed? I mean, we're, somebody's assuming that you're not.
With the Leeds Online, the Leeds Online and the BWI are very similar software. They basically, one does something new and the other one adopts that and starts using it. I'm a lot more familiar with the BWI, because that's the one we've been using since 2011 just to play with, and some of our pawn shops are actually, actually still submitting to those voluntarily. So, I'm a little bit more familiar with that system. It would just take me some time to figure out how Leeds Online does it.
Okay, well, I'm going to cut because, Mr. Lenica made a motion, and Ms. Wilkinson just seconded it, so that sort of cuts off the discussion.
What was that discussion?
Not on, not on table on it?
Well, they don't even-
Okay, well, I got a motion and a second to table item, item D. Is that correct? Got a motion, a second to table.
What was the motion?
Well, Mr. Lenica made it, and I asked him to hold off for a second so we could talk it, talk about it, but, I mean, Ms. Wilkinson just seconded it, so I don't want, just want to make sure.
That is an ad.
You said second.
I know, but he was-
And then you said second.
Yes.
So, that's, I recognize that as a motion and a second. All those in favor of table this, please vote. Miss, we lost one. That's four to two. That is, we approved that one to be tabled. I just want to say this, this is what happens when-
We didn't have it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What happened? Back it up.
Motion failed.
Okay, motion failed.
Motion failed.
I'm sorry. I don't have a screen here anymore. All right, so that fails four to two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the paper that's before us to create an effective date of January 1, 2014.
And that's for item D.
Item D, and I have a comment after, I'll get a second.
Got a motion, let me make sure I got this right, Scott. We had a, the motion to table fail four to two, right? So, now we got a motion to approve item D.
I move in to amend item D.
Yeah, and then add.
And then we have to get that approval. Right. That Robert, he was stickler about rules.
Okay, so you got a motion, somebody second that? All right, all those in favor of that motion, please vote. That's approved five to two with Mr. Lenica and Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. So, now what do we do, Scott?
Well, now you're back to proceeding on the ordinance as amended, which is the ordinance as presented with the amendment to make the effective date January 1st.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amended ordinance for, let me pull the number up just to make sure, 2103-15, and I have a comment.
All right, got a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, I'll, you want my comment before you vote?
Yes, please. I share Mr. Lenica's concerns on three, three points. One, the consistency. I want to make sure that we have adequate amount of consistency within the code, and I think between now and the beginning of the year on implementation. If we find that we need to amend this, I think we have that right, since it's not going to go into full effect until January. So, I would support us further developing a conversation around that. Secondly, I want to make sure that we send a positive signal to the community of businesses that we serve, and I'd like to have an opportunity for us to have meetings, whether it's those of you who are going to be meeting with them on a regular basis, and to have us have meetings to make sure that our intent is clear. We've, we've been two years now on this conversation. It's not a surprise to anybody, but now we're trying to be consistent in Cobb County with our brethren. And number three, remember, this is about public safety. Our goal here is to make sure that the tools that the police department needs to enforce the law are our primary mission, that the public's safety is what's at stake here. And I want to give the tools to the department they need to implement and to protect the public.
All right, I'm going to just say this, you, a lot of good conversation around the table, but this should have been, we should have addressed this before tonight. And I would just encourage everyone, all the elected officials, we've got to get to the table, and we've got to discuss this stuff before we get out of here. We can't come to a meeting and try to figure things out, and we're better than that. So, we got a motion and a second to approve item D. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved five to two, Mr. Lenica and Ms. Wilkinson oppose that. All right, item E.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 213-16, precious metal dealers' ordinance, revision accordingly.
With an effective date of when?
January 1.
Second, you need a discussion on this. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. I got a motion and a second, this is right. Has everybody voted?
No, not yet.
Here we go. That's approved five to two. Screen's not coming up. Mr. Lenica and Ms. Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item F.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve 2013-172. It's a housekeeping measure, effective date January 1, 2014.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved five to. All right, okay, thank y'all very much, and Will.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me real quick, I'd like to personally thank Detective Singleton for all the hard work that he's done working on this for the last couple of years, but he's been very diligent, and he's done a great job, and he, he sets the example for, for the detectives in our police department.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for what all you do every day, all of you on the team. And this, for the public watching, this is another thing, you've heard it said, the two things you don't want to watch being made are sausages and laws. Prime example just witnessed.
Yeah, I'll just say it again, these are three very important issues that we should have had discussion on this prior to us coming out here, so. All right, item seven, it's commercial building permits. We have item A's 2013-373, excuse me, issuance of a commercial building permit at 4560 South Cobb Drive for the construction of Krispy Kreme store.
Hey!
There's nothing, it's, this is a heart surgeon's dream. Mr. Taylor, give us the background, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the title pretty much says it all. It's for the issuance of a commercial building permit for a construction of a Krispy Kreme at 4560 South Cobb Drive. Repose store is 2,464 square feet, and will have an estimated construction cost of $575,057, and will be constructed by Irene Contracting LLC. We recommend approval.
Mr. Lenica? Sorry, Mr. Lenica.
Your Honor, move approval of item 2013-373, the issuance of the commercial building permit. Construction has commenced.
If I could second it, I would. That's my favorite store. Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. I'm going to have some water, so. Seven zero, I need, nobody could vote against a Krispy Kreme. Item eight, excuse me, item eight's a consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Item A is the approval of the October 7, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval of the 2014 Smyrna Community Events, and item C is to award RFP 14-004 Strategic Technology Plan and Risk Assessment to Dell Marketing LP for $54,720 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Do you hear a motion? We approve the consent agenda. Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote. That's approved six to one. Mr. Lenica voting in the negative. Item nine is committee reports. Let's talk to Mr. Ron Finell tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to call forward Acting Fire Chief Roy Acre to talk about a pending holiday and what we can help the young people in the community remain safe. Chief Acre?
Thank you, Councilmember Finell. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I thought that it was appropriate, given that we're about a week and a half away from, from Halloween, just to get up here and talk to a minute to remind everybody about some safety tips, of course, with the upcoming Halloween, excuse me, festivities. Of course, just like every Halloween night, pedestrian traffic is much higher than normal, especially in residential areas, so we ask that of our residents and visitors to the city of Smyrna, if they have to get out and drive after dark on Halloween night, to please do so with extreme caution. One thing that could help is if the adults could help the kids to plan costumes that are bright in color and, excuse me, must be going around, and reflective if at all possible. Also, one thing that really helps is if trick-or-treaters can have a flashlight with them turned on while they're out trick-or-treating. Also, for the young trick-or-treaters, obviously, if a responsible adult could always accompany young children, for the older children that like to go out in groups alone, please plan and review the route that those kids will follow. Make sure that children, and adults for that matter, go only to well-lit houses. Please do never, do not ever enter a home or a car for a treat. Also, although it's tampering, or tampering is rare with, with trick-or-treat, you know, candy, an adult should always closely examine all treats for unwrapped or suspicious items. And lastly, the community relations is going to share all these points, plus just a couple more on our city Facebook page. So, we hope that everybody has a good and enjoyable Halloween evening. If the weather-
We're in the process of narrowing that to the point where we hope by the end of the year, we'll have a new fire chief selected. Chief Lee from the police department. Let's hear some good news about what's going on with the police department and appreciate the work they are doing every day out there to keep our streets safe.
Thanks, sir. Once again, good evening. One of the things that we have been doing is I've been doing monthly leadership training with our, primarily our sergeants and lieutenants. And we've also invited patrol officers who are on the promotion list for sergeants so that they're getting some leadership and supervision training, you know, before they do get promoted to make things a little bit easier. We've been doing primarily most of these classes that we've been doing, a lot of it is coming out of the books of Seven Habits, How to Effectuate People, but, you know, also talking about our policies. We're starting to bring in some guest instructors. In fact, Pastor Cheryl Osmer is going to be in our November class. He does some leadership training in the ministry as well. And he's going to be like a guest instructor that we bring in and to do a short program with that. So we're real excited where we've been going on that. We're five months into this training program now. We're close to finishing up our strategic plan for the department for the next 12 months after we finish that. We currently have about five openings. The most recent young man that we hired is actually originally from the Dominican Republic. He's bilingual. Even though he came to us as a certified officer, he had no experience. He paid his own way through the academy. Very bright young man who was a police explorer in Dunwoody. We've also... One of the other things that we've done in conjunction with Mr. Fennel is we're starting to work with the Whitfield Academy. We're in the process of bringing officers out there and all the supervisors so that they can get a good layout of the area. Sometimes with private schools, we tend to forget them with everything that we do with the public schools. But, you know, they're residents here too, if you will, and our customers. We need to make sure that those children in those areas are protected as well. But we had a very good meeting last week and we gave them a lot of great suggestions. In fact, they're starting to go forth with a lot of the suggestions that we gave them last week. And with that, questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I hope you'll join with me as I do on a regular basis. When you encounter a member of our public safety team, please say thank you for the work they're doing 24/7/365 to make our community safe. I do want to make note, in addition to the five openings that we have, that we have and the Dominican native who has recently joined the force. We have a new ranger with us, Patrick Law. Is he in the room or is he outside guarding the door? If you haven't had a chance to meet him, he's a great new addition to the team. Let's thank him, too, when you get a chance on your way out the door. I'm wearing, you note, a pink tie. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I just wanted to make note, for those of you who have a loved one who has experienced a bout with cancer or who are survivors, that we join with you and celebrate the opportunity for renewed life and the opportunity to share the positive message as to how we can prevent and find a cure for cancer. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White, Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have no report tonight from either HR or court services. I do want to begin by noting the passing of some Smyrna folks of note in the last month or two. No particular order. I want to extend condolences to the family of Norma Jean Barge Watts, longtime Smyrna resident. Many of you know or know of her son, Dr. John Barge, state school superintendent. To my knowledge, the first state school superintendent ever to be from Smyrna. She was here on the city hall steps a month or so ago when he announced his candidacy for governor. And again, she lived in Hickory Hills. John Barge grew up there. And we extend our condolences to the family and note her passing with sadness. Last week, another Smyrna resident of Ward 6, Neil Peavy, passed away. Neil is probably the most famous man in Smyrna who isn't famous, but is responsible, in my opinion, for Smyrna being what it is today. In 1988, Neil Peavy and his partners Bobby Gibson and Tommy Ubanks, Campbell High School grad, came to the council and proposed rezoning a new subdivision, which eventually was done in 1988, my first year on the council, and became Vinings Glen, Phases 1 and 2. That changed the residential component of the Smyrna community forever. All the other developers in the metro area told them they were crazy, they were going to fail, they were stupid, they were going to lose all their money, they were going to bankrupt their company, Glen Devon Development, that they had made a huge mistake, on and on and on and on. And Neil Peavy and his partners, I'm sure, laughed all the way to the bank. They couldn't build houses fast enough to sell them. And they ended up buying property on the north side of Ridge Road and built Vinings Glen 3, 4, and 5. The success of those neighborhoods woke the development community in metro Atlanta up to the location and situation of Smyrna. At that time, we had just launched our project to rebuild the downtown. We had bought the property downtown, bulldozed it, and in 1991, of course, opened the new library and community center in the Village Green. Combination of all those things led to a residential building explosion in Smyrna that many people in this audience and many people at home on TV are now living in the product of that. The city of Smyrna in 1988 was probably 30,000 people. Today, we're over 50,000. We've gone from being a place realtors avoided to a place realtors want to be. We've gone from a place developers avoided to a place home builders want to be. And frankly, in my opinion, that started with the courage shown by Neil Peavy and Tommy Ubanks and Bobby Gibson. Neil was an Army veteran. He not only built the neighborhood, but then bought a home there and lived there. And he's responsible for what we enjoy today in Smyrna. I note his passing with a heavy heart and extend my condolences also to his family. A couple of months ago, another resident in Forest Hills, World War II veteran, Ray Moore, passed away. 86 years old, former general manager of WSB-TV. Another great veteran, very quiet and assuming, dignified man who lent integrity and graced everything he was involved in. And very recently, this past Saturday, one of our previous Memorial Day speakers passed away. Ed Laporta, resident of Creewood Forest subdivision, Ward 6 resident, 96 years old. Many of you will remember, it's probably about four years ago when he spoke at Memorial Day. Ed was an American treasure. There's no other way to describe him. He was a member of the First Armored Division in the early stages of the war, was eventually shot out of three tanks and captured by the Germans, escaped once, recaptured. In January 1945, as the Russians approached his Stalag in Eastern Europe, the Germans put him on a forced march and started moving him west to get away from the advancing Russian armies. Ed Laporta's best friend, Lefty, couldn't make the march. He couldn't walk. So Ed carried him 82 miles through that snow, through the blizzard. No food, no water. He was a hero. And not only Smyrna, but America is much worse off for his passing. Extend my condolences to his family. And I know all veterans in Smyrna will miss him. On a happier note, I do want to recognize that Teasley Elementary School had their 50th anniversary celebration two weeks ago, October 13th. A lot of Smyrna neighborhoods in Ward 6 attend that school and now Teasley Primary, which is in the old Brown Elementary School. And 50 years and a very strong community love for that school. People volunteering to participate in that event that don't have kids there but who just love the school. And Principal Leslie Mansfield and Jill McCurry, the head of the PTA, and all the folks that helped with that event, you know, made us proud to have that school as part of the Smyrna attendance zone. Finally, I'd just like to thank the residents of Forest Hills for inviting me to their Fall Festival yesterday. Got to meet a lot of old friends, talked to new friends, and I appreciated that invitation. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mary Moore to come up and give us a report of the library.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to highlight a few of our Halloween events next week. Our regular storytimes will all have Halloween themes, but the youth services department will also host a special Book-a-Ween program that's on Halloween night from 5 to 7:00. And children are encouraged to come dressed as their favorite storybook characters. We'll have crafts and snacks and trick-or-treating all through the library. The night before, on Wednesday, October 30th, we have a program just for grownups. From 8 to 9, we'll be screening monster shorts. What we've done is we've selected a number of short films from our IndieFlix database, and these will be scary shorts with monsters and vampires and zombies. And this is not a family event. This is for grownups. If you've never used our IndieFlix streaming films, we can show you how to do this at our BYOD party. We will have a Bring Your Own Device party also on Wednesday, October 30th. So what you can do is you can come to the library anytime between 1:00 and 8:00 that day and bring your mobile device, your phone, your smartphone, your tablet, your e-reader, whatever you're using. And there'll be librarians on staff to show you one-on-one how to access the movies, the digital magazines, audiobooks, ebooks, whatever it is that you're interested in learning about. So that's October 30th from 1:00 to 8:00. Thanks.
BYOD?
Right.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. I tried at home. It didn't work.
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio from Parks and Rec to give us a report. Thank you.
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Department will host its Casper's Friendly Castle Halloween event, of course, on October 31. Halloween date, that is from 10:00 a.m. to noon. That is for the toddler-aged group. Smyrna Community Center, 200 Village Green Circle. Bring the little ones to the center. We'll have carnival games, inflatable giant slide and moonwalk, magic show, hayride outside. How many cities do hayrides in their downtown? I ask you that. Face painting, costume contest, and much more. Resident families, the entire family, $10; non-residents, $20. You can register online at www activnet.com or call the Smyrna Community Center at 431-2842 and we'll give you some more details. 10:00 a.m. to noon for the toddlers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. With that, I yield.
Mr. Charles Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I see Ann Kirk out there. Don't worry, Frank. I'll get to you. Could you also tell us just a little bit about what's going on then in the arboretum over here? And you're with the trees and so forth?
Well, Public Works probably could speak better to that, but those trees were diseased and actually dying. If you even look at the stumps, you can tell the bark is split and peeling off of them. And in order to get new trees in and get growth on them as quickly as possible, it was necessary to remove these trees. We couldn't plant anything there until those trees were out of there. So as far as I understand, the plan is to replace the trees after the soil has been treated. And our arborist was involved in this process. So this has been something we've actually needed to do for some time, so I'm really glad it's gotten done.
You know, and we talked about this myself and Councilman Fennel as we were coming down the steps, oftentimes, the four new members that are on council may not have known what had happened in the past. But at one time, we had a whole different design because we had really, we'd had so much growth of so many of those trees that it was, you know, we were going to go back in there and do some other things. And we held off on that, I don't know if it was budget reasons or not, but that was planned to do even before you guys got on board in 2012, so yeah.
Yeah, some of that, it was, it's maintenance issues. And I think that Scott's working on that now. Maybe Frank can speak to that a little better than I can. We did have our adopt-a-mile cleanup for the fall quarter on Saturday, and we had 88 people come out, even though we had a light drizzle. They gave 557 hours and cleaned up 70 bags of trash. And we had 22 groups participating, plus a lot of individuals who just came out and showed up and wanted to help. So that was wonderful. Friday, we will be having our annual IBM Day of Service. We have 14 or 15 projects, depending on how many volunteers, but we're looking for 160 to 200 volunteers from the IBM corporate office over on Highlands Parkway. And we're really excited about this. All the supplies that have been purchased for this were either donated by the schools, came through IBM grants, or Keeps Smyrna Beautiful. There's been no taxpayer money spent on this project. So we're really excited about that. They've been our corporate partner now since 2005. This, I guess, is our eighth year. So this is wonderful. And Sunday, we had 15 members of the Key Club at Campbell High School who organized and implemented a cleanup on their own. And we provided some supplies for them, but they cleaned up around the campus. And my hat goes off to them, and we look forward to working with them again in the future. We'll be having our Rivers Alive cleanup on November 2nd, now that the government is up and running again, the federal government. And we invite all the volunteers that were signed up for the October cleanup to please come out and help us on November 2nd and keep your fingers crossed for good weather. We have jongles available at the recycling center and at backyard feed and seed. They're $15 for a bag of 50. And we would look forward to selling those out at the Jongle Festival this weekend. So looking forward to that. Get your jongles now. There may not be any after this weekend. And we also have community garden plots we're leasing now through the 2014 year. So if you want a community garden plot, give our office a call and we'll get you all that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Frank Martin. I think Scott Stokes took off today, just so you'd have to come up and do this. If you would have come up, please give a report for us.
Reference to those trees, the locates were called in a day, actually, so the stumps can be pulled up and soil amended and get ready for planting. A couple of things. Laurel Springs Drainage Project, the project is complete. They just need to install some fencing that had to be taken down during installation of Storm Shore. So that will be completed the rest of this week with the fencing. Also, the Creewood Drainage Project. The Creewood Drainage Project, the pipe placement is 100...
We have jongles available at the recycling center and at backyard feed and seed, they're $15 for a bag of 50. And we would look forward to selling those out at the Jungle Festival this weekend. So looking forward to that. Get your jongles now, there may not be any after this weekend. And we also have community garden plots we're leasing now through the 2014 year. So if you want a community garden plot, give our office a call and we'll get you all that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Frank Martin, I think Scott Stokes took off today, just so you'd have to come up and do this. If you would have come up, please give a report for us.
Reference to those trees, the locates were called in a day, actually, so the stumps can be pulled up and soil amended and get ready for planting. A couple of things, Laurel Springs Drainage Project, the project is complete, they just need to install some fencing that had to be taken down during installation of storm sewer. So that will be completed the rest of this week with the fencing. Also, the Creekwood Drainage Project. The Creekwood Drainage Project, the pipe placement is 100% complete and the landscaping is about 70% complete. So the whole project itself is about between 80 and 85% complete. At the end, Road Storm Sewer Replacement, the contractors are getting mobilized this week to get that job started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, again, we've talked a little bit about Concord Road for several weeks here, that construction is continuing. And I have had some complaints regarding some cleanup and some grassing along the roadway. I have addressed that a couple of times with the engineer, the city engineer and community development, excuse me, with the city engineer. We are working to get that taken care of by either the contractor or the city, so we'll continue to work on that problem. But with that, Mr. Mayor, you.
Thank you. Ms. Nellwidge.
Thank you, sir. Finance does not have a report tonight, but I would like to invite Jennifer Bennett up with Community Relations, since there are some events and other happenings happening.
Well, we have a big reminder, it's going to be sweater weathered this weekend and perfect for the Jungle Festival. Saturday is from 10 till 6:00 and Sunday is from noon until 5:00. Vendor spaces are sold out, we have a full festival, we'll have festival foods as usual, all the fun things, including candy apples for fall. And entertainment at the stage in front of the library and also some acoustic music near the Veterans Memorial. Again, that's Saturday, from 10 till 6:00 and Sunday noon to 5:00. You can, we push out information about not only this event, but all of the things that you've heard from Parks and Recreation and Keep Smyrna Beautiful on our City Facebook feed on a regular basis, that's in addition to the city website. City website is www.smyrnacity.com. Our Facebook listing, you can find at the bottom of the page if you're not familiar with Facebook. You can always just look at it rather than signing up for it, you don't have to do that. But I think you'll be rewarded with regular reminders of all the wonderful things we have going on if you'll just try it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to Public Works and to Ann Kirk for the information on the trees, because I'm still fielding a lot of questions about that. And I actually noticed, walking out there the other day, you look at those stumps, you can see big black chasms in those stumps. I mean, they were leafing, but they were very ill and very dead. And the only way to get new healthy trees is to get rid of the diseased trees, regardless of the fact that they did have leaves. So, thank you. One other thing I'm going to do, because I do have a platform, so I'm going to use my platform to say something I've noticed around town lately. And I spend time on Pinterest and I see all these precious photos of families standing on railroad tracks. If you can find an abandoned railroad track to use for your holiday card photo, have at it, but I am noticing families and couples on the railroad tracks right out there along Atlanta Road. That is one of the busiest rail corridors in the country. I get it, I see the pictures on Pinterest. Y'all, standing out there on the tracks with your photographer for your picture, I've seen people holding up banners, I've seen little kids, that is a really bad idea. So I'm going to use my platform that I have to tell y'all, please don't do that. The railroad tracks aren't the city's, CSX leases them from the state. Bad idea. Do not zip up your bad idea jeans and head out there and have your picture taken on the tracks. It's a quiet zone, there are no whistles, just, please, please don't do it. I'll probably put that on my Facebook page as well, which you can access through Facebook, facebook.com/terryward3. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Okay, Ken, top that one.
Things you don't think you have to remind people to do, yet you do.
I feel that I'm just going to be pretty dry tonight. Sorry, no entertainment value for me. Everything is still up, we're up about 23% over this time last year. I look at 10 categories, nine of the 10 are up. Just a couple to tell you what, dwelling units are up, our plan reviews are up, our inspections are up, and our residential renovations are up. So it was interesting that our renovations peaked, obviously during the downturn, but they've stayed, they went down, but they've flattened out and they're still high. So it's interesting, we're getting new residential construction and we're also getting residential renovations.
Ken, a lot of people may not know, if you replace your water heater, you have to get a permit. What other things would fall in that category that they might not know that they need to pull a permit, well, like a roof?
Yes, you have to do, if you get a new roof, you need a permit for that. It really depends on if you are creating a new space, if you're just replacing windows, you don't necessarily need that. But if you are enlarging that, the opening on that, then you would have to come in. But if you have any questions regarding that, we do have some answers on our webpage, that is an extension of the city's website, and they can always call community.
And if you pull a permit, you have to post it.
That's correct, you do have to post.
You can't hide it in a drawer. One other thing, is commercial down any further than residential right now? Or is it about the, are they both doing pretty good?
The commercial that we have, we are seeing a slight uptake in renovations, tenant, new tenant finishes in existing space. Obviously, when we have a new structure that goes in, that does come to y'all so that you understand the new buildings, like we did with the Krispy Kreme. We haven't had many of those recently, but I expect to have a lot more of those structures because there's a lot of things on the board right now.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, I'll see you this weekend at the Jungle Festival, I hope. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Mr. Eric Taylor, Scott Cochran, Terry Graham. I'm going to, next on the agenda is a show cause hearing, but I'm going to do the citizens' input. I think those department heads, y'all can leave whenever y'all want to. We've got two people signed up for citizens' input, Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail.
I'd like to comment on the article in the Marietta Journal a couple of weeks ago that the city stands to lose $5 million approximately on Hickory Lakes. Taking that, and taking a million off of it, what's a million, I guess, to some of the people on the council, let's say that's $4 million. Now, we lost $3 million on the Smyrna Commons, so we've got $7 million. There's 26,511 registered voters in Smyrna. Now, if you take the cost of the number of registered voters in Smyrna into the $7 million, it's going to cost each registered voter $263 to pay to cover the losses on those two. Now, some households have two registered voters in it. That's $526 for those two, if it's a husband and wife and they're registered. I find this outrageous. Now, I applaud Marietta next month that they're voting on purchasing these apartments, rundown disposable apartments. They have a town hall meetings and a referendum. And I hope people vote no on that. I'm a firm believer that government, again, should not be in private enterprise. And I read about, when they mentioned in the paper, having rundown apartments. If you're enforcing the codes, they shouldn't be rundown. Obviously, someone is not doing their jobs. When the Hickory Lakes was up for sale, four others wanted to fix them up and renovate them. Smyrna was the only one that wanted to buy them to knock them down. So if you're renovating and enforcing the codes, they're very acceptable in appearances. And I see that that's not happening. And I wish, when they do say rundown, I don't accept that. Now, again, the $64 million question is, why didn't Smyrna ever have a town hall meeting or referendum on these two huge purchases? $7 million, if it comes down to four for Hickory Lakes, is a lot of money that must be covered somewhere. And for us, again, to have transparency, which I see did not exist in either one of these, in Smyrna, is unreal. Smyrna Commons, we didn't know until six months afterwards, I don't remember even the council voting on that. So that violated the sunshine laws of even discussing it. But Hickory Lakes, we knew about it. You, again, Mayor, mentioned that there wasn't time for that. I know negotiations were going on in June and July, you didn't close till December. There was ample time to have a town hall meeting, if not a referendum. And I hope the transparency in the city in these last two years of the tenure of all of you becomes a lot more improved. Because we need to know how our money's being spent. And we have a right to ask questions on how it's being spent. And to see these losses that are going to be covered somewhere down the line, again, I don't see how this is going to be covered. But to see this loss as per voter is really unbelievable, when their monies could be used, well-spent somewhere else. And I don't see any explanations of why we never had a town hall meeting or referendum. And I'd love someone to answer that one of these days. Thank you.
Larissa Edwards, 304 Hickory Springs, on ethical city practices.
How is everyone this evening? I hope everyone is fine and in good health. Okay. Are you guys having a meeting tomorrow? A private meeting?
Not that I, I'm not having a private meeting.
No? Okay, that's great. I too would like to make a comment on the upcoming possible financial losses to the city. And I think it's substantial, and it's substantial enough for you guys to, I don't know, how do you guys plan to make up for the debt? You know, I'd really like to get an answer from someone. So I'd see no one's going to answer the question. So I'd like to read something that I pulled up, right on the Smyrna City website. And it says, "Your government, the city council, is charged with providing effective municipal government consistent with the needs of the city and the boundaries of the city budget." Did the city need to make these real estate purchases? Or did the city desire to make these real estate purchases as real estate investors? Does anyone have a real estate license on the board? I'm just curious. Oh, you do? That's great. So what, you know? I'm just, I mean, we'd like to get some feedback from you guys, we'd like to see a town hall meeting, we'd like to be able to ask questions. And we'd like to have you guys answer the questions without getting offended, because I'm not lying about anything. Have I said anything that's an untruth? But I tell you what. I'm going to read the Smyrna muni-code, okay? Under Smyrna City Government, and it says that "Each member of the city, of the civil service board shall seek to find and employ more efficient and economical ways of getting tasks accomplished. Never discriminate unfairly by dispensing of special favors and privileges to anyone. Make no private promises of any kind bonding upon the duties of office, since a government employee has no private word, which can be binding on public duty. Engage in no business with the government, either directly or indirectly, which is inconsistent with the conscientious performance of their governmental duties." Right here, is this your email, Mayor? By the way, did I get that right? Is that right? This is the mayor's email. "If you feel, City of Smyrna, that some of the practices that the city has been engaged in is not right, I'd like you to send an email to mbacon@ci.smyrna.ga.us." That's m-b-a-c-o-n at c-i dot s-m-y-r-n-a dot g-a dot u-s. And if you would, cc me, thank you, at b-s-s-p-l-i-t-t-e-r at AOL dot com.
Thank you for your comments.
That's, one second, please.
Thank you for your comments, you're timed up.
B-s-s-p-l-i-t-t-e-r at AOL dot com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is a show cause hearing, 2013-53, appeal denied by License and Verance Board, foul call service permit, Ann Newton. She in the building? If you please step forward. Mr. Taylor, you give us the background on that, and then I'll ask Mr. Cochran to do his thing.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, real briefly, Ms. Newton applied for a service permit with the Smyrna Police Department on September 16, 2013. And she was denied that service permit. And so she appealed to the License and Verance Board per City of Smyrna ordinances, where that appeal was heard and denied on October 9, 2013. So in accordance with ordinance 6-51, she has the right to appeal up to the mayor and council, and so that's what she's doing this evening.
Mr. Cochran, we need to swear anybody in that's going to give testimony?
Sure, I'll swear you in, and let me just tell you a little bit about the hearing. It's an informal thing, it's an opportunity for you to present any evidence that you'd like, or say anything you want to say to them, if you have anybody that you want to testify on your behalf, or anything you want to say, then they can ask you questions. So it's pretty informal. And let me just swear you in real quick, okay?
I think for us, if you'll just tell us what you're currently doing and what you're here for.
I currently work at Timbers on Concord Road. I'm employed as a cook and a manager. And I was hired by my boss to come in and, you know, manage for him while he was, he was sick at the hospital, like, a year and a half ago. And I told him I couldn't get a liquor permit, you know, and he said I would just be coming in overseeing the business for him, because him and his partner are both sick. So I did, and then when he got better and came back to work, then I really didn't have, I couldn't, I didn't have a job because I couldn't, you know, bartend or anything like that. So he put me to cooking. But to better utilize my, you know, me as a manager, I'm asking for a liquor permit so that I can, I'm not asking to bartend on a full-time basis or anything like that, I just would be more effective if I could, you know, manage the front of the house and be able to help out if they got busy or whatnot. I, you know, I did make mistakes and I do, you know, I will, you know, hold myself accountable for it. But I have made major changes in my life in the last four years. You know, I've just, I'm in school full-time, I'm getting associate's degree in healthcare management, and I'm making straight A's. You know, I've just really have focused on, you know, making all the right decisions and choices. And I'm just asking that you would grant me this permit so that I could better, you know, do, you know, my job and, basically, just, you know, I'm stuck down in the kitchen and I'm lugging out trash cans and it's just really hard. So I'm just asking that I, you know, do what I do best, and that's manage at the, you know, upstairs. I've been working for my boss for like the last, on and off for 17 years. I managed Bones for him when they first opened, for the first eight or nine years. And, you know, been working on and off, you know, for Terry for, like I say, about 17, 18 years now. So I just ask that you, see it in your heart, should you grant me this permit?
Not only, not only are you in school, but you're making
Not only, not only are you in school, but you're making straight A's. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's great. Are you planning on pursuing some type of a career in healthcare management?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I am. School is, it's like a two-year course, so I'm three months into it. So I am, you know, definitely looking to, you know, go into that field. I'm just, just really kind of needing to do what I can until I can, you know, graduate from school and all. And this would help me a lot.
Well, I mean, I read through your letter. I read through the letters that your boss sent and I guess a couple of other people sent too.
Yes, ma'am.
They were all very positive about how they felt about you. That you've been with this same boss for so many years, it speaks very well of what he thinks of you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I just want you to promise us that you're on the straight and narrow and that, you know, if we put faith in you, that we can feel it's well-placed.
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't come before you if I didn't feel that, you know, that that's the path that I'm on. Because, I mean, I, I mean, it's been four years that I've, you know, made these, you know, made this choice on my own. And I, there is no, no going back. I mean, I, I feel so good about the future and what it holds for me that, I mean, I'm excited, you know. I get up every day, I'm ready to get, you know, to school and, you know, I have something to look forward to. So I'm really, I, you have my promise, yes, I am.
Good. Good. White.
Ms. Newton, thank you for being here tonight.
And I know the restaurant where you're working does a lot of work in the community, kind of quietly behind the scenes, which is much appreciated by all of us.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question. You understand that if we were to grant you this and then there were to be a problem, that not only could you find yourself in trouble, but the restaurant and the owner could find themselves in real trouble with the city?
Yes, sir, I do. I am very, very aware of that, yes, sir.
And so, you know, carrying on any sort of business that deals in a regulated substance like alcohol carries heavy responsibilities, not only to yourself, but to the business and to the community. Now, as a manager, I assume you would be, you know, overseeing the operations in the front of the house if we were to grant this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Tell me a little bit about how you would train people that were serving or bartending, engaging in the sale of alcoholic beverages, to know when to cut off a person, to know how to check IDs, to do all the things that need to be done to do that business legally, which is all we want.
Yes, sir, yes. I, among my staff that they, you know, anyone that, you know, that looks, I mean, they, if they don't know that customer, then they card them. They have to make sure that it is a valid ID. And if it's not in the state of Georgia, then most likely, you know, that they need to get a manager to look over it, because sometimes, you know, they have fake IDs out there. So they are very aware that, you know, to card anybody that, you know, doesn't, that is not a regular customer, by all means. Also, you know, to cut off people that are, if they, you know, appear to, you know, be slurring their words or that they've had too much to drink, that they need to just politely, you know, just tell them that they've had enough and that, you know, we'd be glad to call a cab for them and get them home safely. But, you know, to not, to continue to serve to where they're over intoxicated.
Those are all good things. Do you have numbers for cab companies conveniently posted?
Yes, sir, we sure do. Yes, sir.
And?
An angel ride.
Angel ride, of course.
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fennel.
Ms. Newton.
Anyone else have anything?
Ron Fennel.
Ron?
Doctor.
Okay.
What training program for alcohol service does the establishment use?
Well, we have a standard operating procedure manual where, you know, we have them come in and they read it and then we go over, you know, the, over it with them and make sure that they understand it. They come in and they're, I mean, we're really, we don't have a very...
Well, they're two standard national, there's TIPS and then there's ServeSafe. I'd highly recommend that you give the staff an opportunity to graduate from either one of those training programs. ServeSafe, which is offered by the Georgia Restaurant Association, and a TIPS training, which is offered nationally, as you might be aware. Both of those programs are widely recognized by local and state jurisdictions as having an effective communication of the needs and the requirements to meet ordinances and state laws. So I'd highly urge those two programs to be a part of a manager's portfolio of knowledge, so would help.
Yes, sir. I am, I am ServeSafe certified myself.
Any other questions? That's it.
We're going to give you that shot. I'm going to make a motion that we grant you your service permit.
Thank you.
And we don't want to see you again. We want you to be, we want you to graduate and have a good life, okay?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Motion's second to approve this request to have a liquor permit. Is there any discussion? Although it's in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved, 7-0. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's the final item on the agenda. Unless there's any other bids to be brought for this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at, from what I can tell, 9:50, is that right?